I just want to let everyone know that we'll continue so long as there's no disruption. Anyone who disrupts the business of the city will be asked to leave chambers at this time. We do need to get through this meeting to conduct the business of the city, so folks are welcome to sit in the meeting to have orderly public comment, but we will not be able to tolerate any further disruption. So, please go ahead, Mr. Carpio.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is André Carpio, and I'm from Belgium, and I was a boy during the war. I didn't make any noise here. I was not part of the group, I wasn't aware of it. But I think you should know that from my second worry window, when the Germans retreated, I didn't see the pounding, but I saw my mother laying on the sidewalk. She had been bound by frustrated German soldiers. She had one lung that was punctured, and the left breast was also punctured. And she was pregnant, so she had to have an emergency abortion, or whatever you want to call it. And so, that was about in 1944. At the beginning, the Germans were retreating from having lost the D-Day defense. So, several months later, the Germans were flying, but they were on the citadel of our town, which has been for centuries a worrying spot because of the strategic position over the river. And there, as a boy, again, a witness shooting, and unfortunately, I saw several American soldiers being hit in front of me, and they were dying. It was something very bad. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Carpio. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at public comment? And can you please speak into the microphone we're being broadcast?
Thank you. My name is John Lindsay-Poland. I work for the American Friends Service Committee. I live in Oakland. I hope that a lesson that you take from the disruption that you just experienced is that this is an issue that is very, very important to many people in this community, people who live here and people who shop here. And it's not going to go away. So, I know it's not on the agenda, and that's actually why we're here. So, you can't speak to it because it's not on the agenda. It's kind of a circular problem. So, I guess what I would like is if sometime this evening, you singly or collectively would address how to address this issue within these chambers, as you, as something that you will grapple with. These are not easy issues. One thing I will say about the killing of Yvette Henderson last year, when I spoke with a sergeant in the APD about the advantages that AR-15s have, he said, "It's accurate at a long distance." In other words, it's a sniper weapon. Now, Yvette Henderson was not killed at a long distance. She was killed at a relatively short distance. The only time that an AR-15 has been discharged in the history of its use, its possession within here in Emeryville, was in the killing of Yvette Henderson. The only time that it was discharged, used, was someone ended up dead. So, it's not, there's no record that it has any positive use beyond the firearms that the police department already has. So, all I'm saying is, you have to bring this out of public safety and into these chambers to deal with it, because people will come back. And I recognize it's uncomfortable. People, you know, disrupted your meeting, they stopped your meeting, it was inconvenient, maybe you were afraid even. No one harmed anyone else, but it's, people are trying to make you uncomfortable because someone died, and they believe that it didn't have to happen.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at public comment? Seeing none, is there a city manager's report?
None this evening, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Move the consent calendar.
Second.
I'll go along with that. I just want to make a comment on 6.6.
I have to abstain on all of the minutes. 6 point, well, it looks like 6.2, 6.3, 6.4.
Okay.
And then, Ruth, which one did you want to pull? 6 point?
Well, I don't want to pull it, I just want to comment on 6.6.
Do you want to go ahead?
Okay.
Yeah, I wanted to...
I just want to...
Yeah, I wanted to ask about that. You know, I...
I guess we'll pull it.
So, let's pull 6.6. And then, we have a motion.
Oh, wait, not 6.6, excuse me. It was more, it was, had to do with taking our future captain and lieutenant out of what we've been doing and having them become...
A reclassification?
Yeah, classification. So, that was what I wanted to talk about. So, it's 6.9.
6.9 and 6.9.1.
Yeah, I wanted to, I just wanted to hear more about that. I don't quite understand about that.
Move the remainder of the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Davis, a second by Asher. Would the clerk please call the roll? And, sorry, also noting that Donahue is abstaining from 6.2, 6.3, and 6.4. Would the clerk please call the roll?
And this is also pulling 6.6, 6.9, 6.9.1.
I don't think we need to pull 6.6 just to make the comment, do we?
No.
Your Ruth's comment.
Well, I thought Scott wanted to ask me about it at first, so...
No, it was 6.9 that I wanted to know about. I don't, you know, if I can get 6.9 answered, I don't, all the other points are...
All right, so before we call the roll, let me just make my comment on 6.6, which is, hooray. That's my comment. Maurice knows this has been a project long in coming. This has to do with the Ashby interchange redo. And every time I pass underneath there, which I used to be on a daily basis because of my commute, and I was passing over the weekend under it, there is exposed rebar from where trucks have hit the underside of the second bridge as you're traveling eastbound on Interstate 80. So, it's really substandard at this point. It's been a long time coming, and Measure BB is, what we're proving now is $50,000 for the scoping of the interchange improvements, but basically from Measure BB, we're going to be seeing a $50 million investment into this. So, for any critics out there who think we're not getting our money's worth out of Measure BB, that's a $50 million project right there. So, thank you, I'm glad to see this moving along.
Well, thank you for your work on that. So, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Asher?
Aye.
Councilmember Atkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue, with you abstaining on 6.2, 6.3, and 6.4?
Aye.
Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passed unanimously with the vice mayor abstaining on 6.2, 6.3, and 6.4.
Great. And so, Scott, you had some comments on 6.9?
Well, I just would like to hear from staff about it. What was happening before? Why is there a change?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, and members of council. Ian Appleyard, Human Resources Director. The change is a result of a restructuring of the police department, and this is creating the classification framework and plan to allow, to bolster the supervisory and management ability of the police department. So, in each case, for, in terms of the captain position and moving that into the classified service, the interest is in bolstering the interest in the position from other, from qualified applicants, to be honest. It's my understanding that this position normally, or it depends from jurisdiction to jurisdiction, can be under the classified service, so it'll make it more desirable as, as a more attractive position for somebody who might be applying from the outside, who's already established in a jurisdiction and might not want to leave the security of that jurisdiction, but could have a sense of security as long as it's in the classified service if they come to the city of Emeryville. So, that's the captain position. It's a classification that already exists, we already have position filled, but we have another vacancy right now we're attempting to fill, so we need to make it as attractive as possible. In terms of lieutenant, most other jurisdictions have lieutenant rank. Right now, it goes from, in Emeryville, from sergeant to captain, and that's a pretty big gap, management gap, so they wanted to add this other classification in order to help, you know, have better management control over their organization.
Okay, so this was generated by the police department and the staff and yourself?
Speak into your microphone, please.
So, this is, staff has decided this is a good approach?
This is recommend, this is best practices, it's similar to other jurisdictions. The new chief, who started in September, felt like this was the appropriate reorganization and her vision for the department. And with the assistance of HR, you know, we looked into the other jurisdictions, kind of what are the standard practices here and what are similar job classifications and organizational structures. So, her recommendation certainly was supported by what's happening in the police community and police organizations.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'm satisfied to...
Second.
Approval of 6.9, 6.1, 6.2, 6.3.
Okay, motion from Davis, second from Asher. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Asher?
Aye.
Councilmember Atkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously.
Great, that takes us to public hearings. We have item 7.1. This is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville granting a waiver from the noise ordinance to the Emory Unified School District for construction work on all Saturdays from 8:00 to 6:00, from April 9th to July 30th, except for May 28th and July 2nd, for construction of ECL.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. The Unified School District received a request from Turner to do weekend work on the ECL project that we all know is located at 4550 San Pablo Ave. They're asking for all Saturdays, April 9th through July 30th, from 8:00 to 6:00 p.m. They will take a break on Memorial Day weekend and also the 4th of July weekend. The reason for the request?
Good evening, councilmembers. John Rubio, School District Superintendent. First, before I lay out a couple of these reasons, I just want to, again, publicly say thank you for approving the request in the fall. I think it went very well, it was very successful. We gained some new partners with some of the neighbors that we didn't know as well before, and the students, particularly the basketball team for the boys and girls, were very excited to get into the new gym, so thank you. Similarly, our biggest priority for our side of the partnership with the city is that we ensure that everything opens on time. I'm getting a little bit nervous about the days of rain that I can predict. I didn't predict the East Bay mud water main breaking this morning, and my phone ringing at 7:00 a.m. over and over again. And we had a little bit, a small bit of damage from the water seeping into the site. But, the main thing for us is that we ensure that everything's open and ready for the students, so that's the primary reason we're here and that I'm here this evening. If you want some more information, we have it in the PowerPoint. We did have some issues, as you, I think, may know from our City Schools meeting regarding the timeline and some structural changes to do with DSA making, requiring some redesigns to Steel, and some unusual rain in the fall. So, I'll let Cindy continue.
Oops, it went fast there, let's see. Oh dear, this thing is very finicky, isn't it?
Do you want to get your hand?
Yeah.
Oh, one's here, right.
Alrighty, so let's see where we are here. We got that. So, the conditions are, and I think we skipped a slide, but the type of work that's going to be done is site grading, site concrete work, exterior wall work, interior floor finishing, some landscaping. They're going to be using some backhoes, forklifts, compactors, small power tools, and of course, the workers will be communicating. So, the conditions are listed here. Work will be limited to the time, location, and hours, and type of work and equipment as described in the request, which you saw. Back feeders will be disabled during the Saturday work. Signs will be posted with contact information for concerns and complaints, and they will be answered by a live person. The applicant will notify the neighbors within 300 feet, also the police department, Alameda County Fire. If complaints are received, the work is to stop until the issue is resolved, and City Council may revoke if conditions are not complied with or complaints are not satisfactory resolved. So, the city has notified, put in a 300-foot notification by the city to all neighbors about this public area. They also published it in the newspaper, so all of that was done. And why does not this want to cooperate with me today? Do this. So, after the City Council takes public comment, staff is recommending that the council approve the noise waiver to allow weekend work on all Saturdays from April 9th through July 30th, from 8:00 to 6:00 p.m., except for Memorial Day and Independence Day. And we also have with us tonight, we have Tim Vaskoff and Andrew Pitts from Turner Construction and John Baker from Swinerton. So, if there's any questions, they're here to answer them.
Are there any clarifying questions from council?
I'd like you from the public, if any.
I would too. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to speak on this item?
I don't have a clarifying question. I think it's critical that we move this project forward, and I would move to approve, move the staff recommendations to approve this. We've come down to crunch time here, and we've got to get that school open September 1st. That's my motion.
The one thing I would offer as a change would be, 8:00 a.m. is really early on a Saturday, so I've, I assume other people received an email asking for a little bit of a later start time, so I think that certainly 9:00 a.m. is more humane on a Saturday. So, I would suggest...
Well, Jack, my response to that is, we're being asked here by people who are doing the actual construction work, who know what the deadline is, who know that there are uncertainties between now and the end of the rainy season. We can always change this if we get an outpouring of complaints from the neighbors, but my bias is to move forward and to get this project done.
So, we have a motion, is that a substitute motion in this case?
With 9:00 a.m. as the start time.
Okay, I'd like just to say that...
So, before we get into discussion, we have a motion and a substitute motion. Do we have a second on the substitute motion? I will second it, because, and before we get into any, well, actually, now we can get into discussion, so sorry. Go ahead, Scott.
Well, it's just that we have not had unusually wet weather. Downtown Oakland is 93% of normal to date. Downtown Berkeley is something like 64% of normal. I mean, objectively, that just can't, is not credible as a reason. You know, it's just...
May I add something, if you don't mind? There have been a number of rain delays that we've, we could not account for in the last four months, and to the extent to which Turner, very rightfully so, has had to push the timeline back. It's expected in Emeryville to rain this Friday. I just, I would, I understand what you're saying lately, and like, I had my convertible top down today, it was beautiful. However, I don't have a good crystal ball on the weather, and I'd rather not take the chance with the students.
Well, I just think the, that it's like, just objectively not true, as a reason, that's all. You know, you have plenty of other reasons why you want this, but that just, it's, I mean, just, you know, if you look at the numbers, that no, we've had a slightly lesser amount of wet weather by rainfall accumulation standards. But, you know, I am inclined to give some, you know, to have, allow some Saturday work because I think the project has to go forward, and, you know, are we going to cut off our nose to spite our face? We've got to, got to get the project done. And it's, it's hard for construction people to start at 9:00.
Right.
But, how about a compromise resolution of 8:30? We've had neighbors request a later start time, you know, this is like, they've had to put up with a lot.
So, we've got a motion and a substitute motion and a second.
Would you accept 8:30 as a...
I think 9:00 is more, is more humane. It was a request that came from the public. I don't detect a lot of pushback from the applicants, and I think it's a reasonable compromise. I also want the students to have a place to go to school. I want it finished. And I don't think that 9:00, which will give people just a little bit of time in the morning on Saturdays, who have been under tremendous burden, living right next to the project, just a little bit more time on Saturdays. It sounds to me like they've been very amenable so far, and this was the one little request that we had, so I'm willing to go forward with it at 9:00.
Mayor, if I could say, we notified hundreds of people, is that correct on this?
People within 300 feet.
Within 300 feet. And we got one email objecting to the 8:00 start. I'm inclined to at least start out with the 8:00, and if problems arise, then you can also always take a look at it and revise it. But, I'm not willing to put the start date for the Students of Emory Unified at risk for an hour on a weekend. It just doesn't seem right to me. This is not about the construction company now, it's about whether our kids are going to school on September 1st in a facility that's completed.
Ruth, did you have any comments?
We've only had one objection.
I did have a comment. What did I want to say? I've lost it. Sorry, you have to come back.
That's okay, I'll give my comments, and if you remember yours before we vote, please jump in. The one person who did complain, Elizabeth Calvet, has been someone who has been in constant contact with at least myself. I don't, I can't say if she's been contacting the rest of you, but I know that she's been in constant contact with Mr. Baker and with the superintendent as well. So, the fact that she's the person who is getting in touch with us says something to me. She has organized her neighbors in the past when a request for a noise waiver has come forward, and I think she has seen that her efforts have paid off in terms of the last request and the compromises that were reached. And I think she has also seen that the folks at Turner and Swinerton and the school district have actually listened to the community, which is how we see this request is structured to keep the holiday weekends quiet, which is, I'm sure they appreciate very much, and I think part of that organizing has paid off. So, I do believe that there are folks who are watching carefully what we do tonight, but, you know, perhaps they relied on one person to bring the message across that this is, what they wanted was a little more peace, you know, at a more humane hour, which is why I seconded this motion. And I would love to hear from the applicants if this one hour would be unduly affect the planned construction.
Hi, Andrew Pitts, Turner Construction. The one hour is pretty difficult for us. We have workers coming from all over, we have local workers, we have workers coming from the valley as well, so a 9:00 a.m. start is difficult. The compromise that we made in the past was to start at 8:00 and start heavy equipment at 9:00, so that the noise is limited, but we are still able to start at 8:00, and we would be able to do that again.
So, I just, I will check with my council who made the motion, is that...
Every other day of the week, you start at 8:00, right?
We start at 7:00.
At 7:00. I, my, we can take a vote, my motion remains.
Your motion remains for 9:00.
So, I remember what I want to say.
Go ahead.
You know, I'm surprised not to see a single Emery Bay Village resident come tonight, and since that project is right up against the fence. So, I think maybe they've seen the, or they made their peace with needing to just hurry up and finish at this point, because if anybody were to, else were to complain, it would be Emery Bay Village, because they've been here before. And I also want to give kind of a historical perspective. At the start of construction, when we broke ground, there was a blanket request for Saturday work from the beginning of the project, and we said, "No, you got to come back to us, and we can't just give carte blanche to the project. You got to come back to us when there's very specific reasons and for very specific times," because the whole neighborhood was up in arms about the prospect of being disturbed every single Saturday through the whole length. And that didn't happen. And I've seen this project come to us for very specific, very discreet kinds of tasks, and I appreciate the judgment used to be able to do that. And I, for one, feel like this is the crunch time, it really does make a difference. Time is money, and I support the 8:00 start time just because we are needing to hurry up and finish.
All right, so we have a...
Mayor, before you take the vote, I'd like to reiterate that this is, it's really not about money here, it's about one person's complaint. And I kind of look at it as a set of scales. We have one person on one side of the scale, and we have all the students at Emory Unified on the other side of the scale. And because this one person has worked well with two of the council members, we are not, I don't believe we are giving consideration to the student body of Emory Unified, and I would urge the council members to approve this at 8:00.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
This is for the motion, substitute motion made by councilmember Asher to start at 9:00 a.m.
Correct.
Councilmember Asher?
Aye.
Councilmember Atkins?
No.
Councilmember Davis?
No.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
Motion passed with councilmember Atkins and Davis voting no.
All right, we are moving on to item 8.1, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville approving the conceptual plan for the Horton Street Experimental Traffic Calming Project and directing the city engineer to advertise said project for public bidding.
Um, no.
That doesn't look like a broken water main.
No, that's, that's rain, seasonable or not, yeah. Hi, I am Nancy Humphrey, Environmental Program Supervisor, and I'm here, I'm back as promised, to talk about the Horton Street Experimental Traffic Calming Project. This effort began when the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, BPAC, recommended addressing the increasing level of traffic on Horton Street, which is a bicycle boulevard here in Emeryville. Our pedestrian bicycle plan sets a goal for Horton Street of traffic to stay beneath 3,000 vehicle trips per day. In recent years, traffic has crept up over that number. In 2015, we have good numbers because we have the speed capture signs on there now. We counted on that section of Horton, 3,444 vehicles average daily, with 61% of those trips northbound. those trips northbound. The city received a grant from the Alameda County Transportation Commission to do an experimental traffic calming treatment on Horton, and in November 2014, City Council, on the BPAC's recommendation, directed staff to experiment with Level IV treatments between 45th and 53rd Streets, and depending on the results, consider experimenting with Level V treatments. And our consultants here tonight will clarify what are Level IV treatments and what are Level V treatments.
Too much. I know who you want. Thank you.
We contracted with Alta Planning and Design to develop several alternatives for traffic calming measures, and these were presented at a public workshop during a special BPAC meeting on February 1st of this year. Jeff Knowles of Alta Planning and Design will go over Alta's planning process, the results of that public meeting, and the final recommendations that emerged. But before I hand it over to him, I want to cover a couple of things that might come up. Questions? What was considered? As City Council directed, we experimented, we looked at Level IV treatments, and the plan is, depending on the results of the experiment, we may, then the city may decide to look at further higher level treatments, depending on whether this works or doesn't work. We're not addressing diverters or other potential future changes to traffic patterns. Tonight, we're addressing only the scope as defined by City Council in November 2014, which is the Level IV treatments. How we'll measure the effect of the treatment? We have these traffic signs up that measure both the speed and the number of vehicles, and so we'll be able to have, you know, nearly real-time readings during the experiment and afterward, and we'll get good data that way. We intend to leave the experimental treatments in place for at least a year. They may be such that we can, if they're working, we can continue to leave them in if there are no problems with them. We may even be able to leave them in even if we subsequently add more treatments to the street. We know with Sherwin-Williams Project on the Horizon and just growth in the area that there very well may be a need for further intervention to keep this bicycle boulevard a safe and comfortable place for bicycles and pedestrians. There's funding already identified in the CIP to implement these measures, so that's already something we have set aside. Do any of you have any questions before I hand it over to Jeff Knowles of Alta? Okay, so Jeff Knowles?
Madam Mayor, members of City Council, thank you very much. My name is Jeff Knowles. I'm the consultant to the city. I'm with Alta Planning and Design. I want to take you through our planning process for putting these experimental traffic calming measures before the City Council for your next actions. So this project comes out of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan that Alta, along with Fair and Peers, helped produce and is adopted by the city. Chapter six is the chapter that addresses bicycle boulevards. Horton Street is one of those bicycle boulevards identified in the plan. Table 6.4 out of the Bicycle Plan outlines the different levels of traffic calming treatment that can be applied to your bicycle boulevards. Currently, Level II is the level at which Horton Street, between 45th and 53rd, is operating. So that means that there's identification and wayfinding, there are shared lane markings, there's a crossing improvements, but it doesn't have any sort of actual traffic calming measures in place. And so what we're doing tonight is to talk to you about a process we went through with the public and with city staff and with my own staff, to present some Level IV or significant traffic calming measures that stop short of a Level V, which would be a, a more aggressive treatment. So Level IV includes, if you look in the traffic calming column, includes vertical speed controls. Those could be that take the form of speed humps, cushions, or tables. It could also take the form of horizontal speed controls with chicanes, traffic circles, or curb extensions, or it could take the form of narrowings with chokers, neck downs, pinch points, and center island narrowing. So real briefly, this corridor goes from 45th to 53rd. The general configuration is one travel lane in each direction. There is parking restricted on a good portion of the eastbound side, on the west side, it's mostly permitted. There is a, an existing pinch point that needed to accommodate a creek, and you can see it here. This is one of the reasons why bike lanes cannot travel further along on this corridor. You also have installed, and Nancy mentioned this before, a traffic feedback sign so that motorists can detect, or the sign detects, and motorists will know how fast they're traveling down this corridor. Nancy gave you the figures about traffic volumes. Right now, they are exceeding the goals set out by the Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan. The speeds, I would say, at the 85th percentile also exceed your goals for a bicycle, a comfortable bicycle boulevard. At the 85th percentile, they're above 25 miles per hour. So a quick overview of traffic calming, level traffic calming treatments that I mentioned before. One is the slotted speed hump. This is one that I think bicyclists prefer. It's something that many people are familiar with if they've traveled in Berkeley and Oakland. The benefit of the slotted speed hump is that it allows emergency vehicles, it allows, it's wide enough so that emergency vehicles can pass over without having to slow down. It also allows bicyclists to travel through the slots without having to go over the bumps. But motorists can't avoid slowing down for this level of treatment. This is also called vertical deflection, so anything that comes out of the road that forces people to slow down.
Can I ask a question here?
Yes, ma'am.
So the point is that emergency vehicles have a wide enough wheelbase that they go through, but standard cars don't?
Correct.
Okay.
Could, could I ask another question about that?
Yes.
Last illustration?
Yes, sir.
Is the leading edge a three-quarters of an inch thickness instantaneously, like some of the speed humps that I've seen? Or is it a tapered edge, tapered to zero, that which, from a bicyclist's point of view, matters? You know, if you're, if it's the slot, if it has a hard chimed three-quarter inch rising, it's going to drive cyclists into the slot, which might be dangerous, depending upon traffic. Whereas if it's a tapered edge, I think it's safer.
Right. So what we're going to talk about when I go further along is that you'll see the experimental temporary treatment has been designed to minimize what Councilman is talking about, but your permanent solution where you actually have actual pavement asphalt can minimize that, where you actually get down to a tapered edge. So it depends on the materials selected that are bid out.
Okay.
Additional treatments that we looked at and presented to the public, chicanes. This is where a curb extension exists. This is part of horizontal deflection so that cars, motorists, actually have to slow down to avoid running into something. We looked at mountable medians, and this is what the middle image looks at. A mountable median is one where, again, emergency vehicles can run over the, the curb without having any sort of damage to their, to their vehicles. This configuration, and we'll go into some designs that we presented to the public, would force people and bicyclists to go through and kind of run these channels. It's been proven effective. We also looked at the idea of using protected bike lanes as a way to calm traffic. This would be under the narrowing category. Bike lanes that are protected could look something like this, where you have flexible delineators that actually separate the bicyclists from motor vehicle traffic. This goes above and beyond just having paint on the road. They can also look something like this. This is an example of a one-way, single-lane choker. This is an example that was not presented to the public. There are instances and certainly research to say that this is an effective model and something that maybe works in other places of Emeryville, but the problem with a one-lane choker is that you are introducing a real conflict point between motorists that need to navigate this. And so bicyclists would need, in order to be comfortable, a bypass lane to go around it. We think that there is, there could be room to do that on Horton Street, but then that would also require the removal of parking. So this level of treatment for a one-way, single-lane choker where you're introducing a pretty extensive, pretty aggressive volume control measure is something that could be entertained at a Level V level. So the preliminary concepts that we presented to the count, to the public, Concept 1 was vertical deflection. Concept 2A and 2B were the vehicle lane narrowings through the use of separated bikeways, and I'll get into those in a little detail. 2A and 2B principally meant where we would need to remove parking. Concept 3 was the horizontal shift. So in Concept 1, we introduced speed humps. We introduced mountable medians and chicanes. The number one, of course, element in this plan was the use of those slotted speed humps with the approach lines that you see marked here. Concept 2A was a protected bikeway. We narrowed the travel lanes. We introduced the protected bike lanes with mountable raised surface or flexible delineators. 2A means that we needed to remove 43 of the available 46 spaces along Horton Street, and 2B was where we tried to preserve as much parking as we could. And Concept 3 was the horizontal shift. This idea actually came out of.
I'm sorry. Could you go back to 2B? How many, how many spaces were, did you preserve, and how many were removed in 2B?
Let's see. Parking spaces lost in 2B would be 23 approximately, and 43 approximately in 2A.
Okay, thank you.
The horizontal shift, this involves a chicane style where we actually have a mountable median in the middle. This, we'll get into the public reaction to this, but I can say that the public really kind of had a lot of intense emotions about this, this concept.
Not positive ones?
Not positive ones.
Okay.
And this is, I think, will sum up kind of what we went through at our public meeting, at the BPAC meeting as well. All of these concepts were explained, and in small groups, members of the public were able to discuss elements that they found favorable, elements that they found unfavorable, and they were able to indicate which ones they preferred as both a bicyclist and as a pedestrian. So the bike lane had the number one most favorable votes. Only two people did not like the concepts as were presented. The slotted speed humps also were quite favorable, with only two being unfavorable. When we got to some more of the horizontal deflection, the chicane with the mountable medians, the pinch points, those became a little bit more unfavorable based on the concepts that we presented to them. We took this information, we went back, we looked at all the research just to confirm what we were doing was actually some sort of proven actual traffic calming effectiveness as recognized by the Federal Highway Administration. And this slide hopefully gives you some more information about doing, achieving both of our goals of reducing speeds and reducing volumes. So you see the, the narrowing on the left side has a negative, you know, 4% proven reduction in speed and a negative 10% in volume reduction. So not the most effective in actually calming traffic.
That's interesting.
Speed humps have been proven effective at doing both, speed reduction and volume reduction. Pinch points, like we mentioned, have done, have been proven effective, a little bit less at the speed reduction. The reason for that is that you need to keep on introducing those pinch points along the corridor in order to gain the same sort of effectiveness. And then partial closures, also known as diverters. This is something that I think Council can look at down the road. Again, as effective in reducing speeds as speed humps, much more effective, obviously, in reducing volumes, so a more aggressive treatment again. So the preferred concept is something that has been taken to the BPAC and meets their approval. It incorporates four slotted speed humps, and these also include new bicycle boulevard pavement markings to reinforce that cars are asked, being asked to slow down and observe this priority for bicyclists. There are additional signage that incorporate with each of the speed humps and new yield signs as well at the crosswalks. Well, as I mentioned before, the speed hump slots will be designed at a width to allow the wheels of Emeryville's fire trucks to pass through without slowing and therefore not impede emergency operations. A double yellow center line will be installed advanced of each speed hump to discourage vehicles from crossing into the center of the road to try and sneak by the speed humps. The center line will not continue down the whole street so that motorists feel comfortable moving into the opposite lane to pass and provide bicyclists the minimum three feet of clearance as required by law. The number and location of speed humps were chosen to help maintain an even speed along the corridor and discourage motorists from speeding up between each hump and then heavily braking. Existing driveways, mid-block crosswalks, and the existing curb extensions near 53rd Street were taken into consideration for placement and spacing of separation. Therefore, speed humps are recommended along the corridor with an average of 225 feet spacing from a stop sign or another speed hump. Research has shown that speed humps that are three to three and a half inches high and 12 to 14 feet long to be effective dimensions at reducing speeds and volumes. To reinforce and further communicate to motorists that bicycles have priority on Horton Street, new bicycle boulevard pavement marking is recommended following each new speed hump in each direction of travel. Parking is largely restricted on the east side of Horton Street, and this condition will allow northbound bicyclists to safely ride near the curb and bypass the speed humps if desired. The recommended design places speed humps four feet away from the face of the curb to accommodate this desired bicyclist path of travel. On the south side of Horton Street, an existing curb extension and on-street parking creates a situation where southbound cyclists are expected to be riding with, within the travel lane. Alta does not recommend removing parking at the speed hump locations to allow bicyclists to bypass the speed humps along the curb. This would introduce unnecessary merge conflicts between bicyclists and vehicles as the bicyclists would have to merge back into the travel lane after each speed hump. Southbound cyclists will be able to utilize the center wheel slot in order to avoid riding up and over each hump if they so desired. In more detail, this is at 53rd Street in Horton. There is existing bicycle boulevards. You see that in the light white. We would essentially add to the existing bicycle boulevard. So you see the approach to the first speed hump. This is what it looks like in closer detail. The speed hump in this location was picked because right now bicyclists that are traveling from left to right in your diagram are coming from a, a, excuse me, a bicycle lane, and this pinch point that exists right now going over the creek forces people to merge with traffic. So this speed hump will slow down traffic and hopefully accommodate and help that merge This is the next speed hump. Moving along, we're adding the yield here to pedestrians sign and additional yield line markings to the road. And finally, this is where the project study ends at 45th and Horton Street. So as an experimental basis, there are options that have been manufactured to be installed cheaply and to be removed if the experiment needs to be put into a permanent basis or removed altogether. So Alta has identified vendors that can provide modular, easy-to-install temporary materials, and this is one example of those materials. This is another example of what they look like. And we've also developed cost estimates for a temporary basis. The total cost for doing these treatments, which include the speed humps and the new markings and signage, would be $33,900. And now I'll answer any questions that I can.
Are there any clarifying questions?
So can you go back to the drawing of what the bike lanes would look like? So what I don't understand is what would prevent a, yeah. What would prevent a car from just bike, from having one wheel go up against the curb and into the bike area to, to avoid half the car going over the hump? Because that would cause a conflict with the cyclists potentially.
Right. So there are many different ways that you can provide that separation.
So is the recommendation to do this kind of a treatment?
No.
Of what you're showing?
This was not, this was not part of the recommendations.
Just, just the slotted humps without any protection for bicyclists going along the edge?
Correct. Yep.
So what you're saying is that we could expect to see cars, I mean, I know driver behavior. I'm a bicyclist and a driver, you know, it's like, you'll avoid, you'll try to avoid one of the humps on, on one set of wheels.
Right. So that's what the center lines are going to help reinforce.
I think she meant the other side.
The curb side?
The curb side, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
They'll go over into the curb area where the bicyclist would be, potentially.
They're still going to hit two of their wheels, so there's, there's, there's nowhere where a typical vehicle could avoid the speed hump altogether.
No. But it will encroach on the bicycling area.
Depending on where this is. Depending on where this is, the bicyclist may be traveling with traffic. And they could be moved further away or closer to the curb line, but then that's going to mean that novice bicyclists that don't want to go through the center slot are going to have to ride up and over the speed hump.
Or up against the curb.
Or against the curb, which is not something that we'd recommend. Because they could encounter a parked car and then have to merge back with traffic. And so that's, you know, that's what we want to avoid. We want them to be seen and not, and have more predictable behavior so that cars, when they need to pass, can know where they are.
Can you, can you go back to the bar chart that has volume and speed on it?
Yes.
Okay. So on this, which is, when I'm looking at effectiveness, which of these is safer for cyclists?
The B-PAC prefers the speed humps. They did not--
Yeah, that's, I'm not asking that, what the B-PAC preferred, but I'm asking, you know, is a protected bike lane safer for cyclists? Because traffic calming, just kind of in the abstract, is not exactly what we're doing, right? I mean, we're trying to calm traffic to get a certain effect, and one of those effects might be better safety for cyclists. And so in terms of bike boulevard versus a protected bike lane, which one offers more safety for the cyclist?
A protected bike lane.
Okay. Are there any other clarifying questions?
Just the leading edge of the temporary speed humps, about how much vertical gain is there?
You'd have to look at each vendor. We could, the city could look and select a vendor that met, you know, a lower threshold. Yeah, but unfortunately I don't have that information.
Mayor Martinez, thank you for a very extensive presentation. The B-PAC and the council, to some extent, have been discussing Horton Street for years and years and years. I think we have a well-vended plan in front of us for an experimental look at what we can do on Horton Street. I would suggest I would move this resolution and let's move it forward and see, we'll give it a year to see what it does and whether the safety improves for the bicyclist or not. But the time has come to take some action. There's been a lot of work, and thank you Nancy for the work that's been put in by staff. It's been an awful lot. So I move the resolution.
Okay, we have a motion, but I still have a clarifying question. Could you bring up table 6.4, please? So when I'm looking at the difference between level three and level four, I'm only seeing one thing that is different here, and that's the narrowing. So I just want to understand, was the B-PAC presented with all of these narrowing options as the level four significant traffic calming that was asked for last November by the previous council?
They were presented with different narrowings, not the one-lane choker.
Okay, so just the choker was the only thing that was left out?
A choker can also be two lanes, so it could be known as a pinch point. There's a lot, all these terms get tossed around. So in the concept-- notice in the bottom section at the crosswalk, that's a two-lane choker, right? It's not preventing traffic to negotiate a common conflict point, but it is putting bicyclists into the same space as traffic. So this is what was resoundingly voted unfavorable--
Sure.
--by bicyclists.
And I understand that, and I understand, you know, it's, they gave their reactions. I guess I'm just wondering why they weren't offered the chokers to give their reaction to. And I understand why it's, you know, and I got the memo, I read the memo. I understand why it wasn't in consideration this time around, but I just, I want to have a clear understanding of why it wasn't on the table for B-PAC.
Right. We felt like this was a full array of different chokers, narrowings, medians, vertical deflection, narrowings with bicycle lanes. There was a lot of different reaction that we could have gotten from the different group. They did ask for, if we could incorporate narrowings with a bicycle bypass, and that's something we looked at, but that would require, again, a full removal of essentially parking along the street.
Okay, so we have a--
I have a question. This is for staff, not for you, Jeff, but have there been any safety incidents with bicyclists on Horton Street?
No, we haven't found any data showing any collisions of bicycles. We don't know about things that may be below the reporting level, but nothing that has been reported.
So we're not doing this because of a demonstrated need for safety? It's just a perception that there's too many cars and they're going too fast?
It's because of our goals and our plan for a bike boulevard to be a priority bike street, so--
Right.
And so we set the goal of a vehicle volume on it. And since we're getting above that volume, we wanted to look at ways to get it back under for comfort and safety, even though there were no particular safety incidents. We don't want there to be one.
Right, I understand.
Yeah.
Okay, if that's it for the clarifying questions, I'd like to provide an opportunity for the public to speak. Seeing none, is there any discussion?
Well, yeah, I have one.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have a motion. Is there a second on the motion?
Which is--
Before we have--
To approve--
To move, we have a motion for the resolution.
I'll second it so we can just talk about this some more.
Yep, so we have a motion by Davis, a second by Atkins, and let's have discussion.
Okay, so if the issue is to make this a safe place for people to ride their bicycles, the safest thing to do would be to do a Class 1 bike path?
Yeah, well, the safest thing to do would be, right, a separated bike path, like a cycle track. What we're trying to do is to, we have in our bike ped plan and in our general plan that this is a bike boulevard with bike priority. So it's not that they, it's not separate but equal, it's, you know, full use of the street and priority use of the street. So it's a way that it was defined, that's why we're going for this. When we did look, the public was very favorable toward the protected bike lanes that were presented. When we looked at it further, there were problems because of the existing boulevard there at the creek. We couldn't have continuous bike lane going south, so that made it, that made it difficult to design. Furthermore, even though it narrows the road, it doesn't provide a lot of relief from the volume and speed of traffic, which is in itself a concern for the neighborhood and for the bicyclists.
Can we have the preferred concept up for the discussion?
I like this approach because statistically speaking, if you can lower traffic speeds, it is significantly safer for being a cyclist. And the problem with that one stretch of Horton Street is traffic does go faster. The temporary signage that announces the speed did have some effect. I saw when it first went up, you know, it was anecdotal, but it looked like it dropped the actual speed to below 30 pretty well, right away. I just want to point out for the public who may be listening that we've had some deaths in Emeryville on streets that are much higher speeds, like San Pablo, much higher volumes. San Pablo and Powell, we've had two deaths there, and--
And Christie. But that was with a pedestrian.
That was a pedestrian death. And that, the good thing about Horton Street from a bicycling and pedestrian viewpoint is that it's just a smaller, slower street, and we don't really have a lot of options about that kind of a street. Horton is really it. And I think that this plan would clearly lower speeds, and I think that's desirable. And it just seems like while it's not truly level four, it's more like an option on, you know, it's a level three. The experiment, to try it out, we can see if it does do what it's intended for, that it could do the job. I would like to think that we would have learned other things from the study that I didn't see, and maybe you weren't paid to do this, but carrying capacity of the street, for example. Like, one of your traffic engineers did say that it's the number of intersections on the street that actually controls the ultimate volume when the street just can reach capacity for automobile and bus traffic. It's intersections. And that in the future, it'd be nice to know what each intersection loads the street to from an automobile carrying capacity viewpoint, because we've had a lot of discussion of what is considered a hazard at Sherwin and Horton from a driver point of view and a bicyclist point of view. We've had neighbors asking for some kind of additional control at that intersection. It would just be nice to know, what would that control cost us for a street carrying capacity? You know, if ALTA had that data, that would be interesting to know about for just going forward to understand the street. But I agree that the, I think that the staff idea about trying this first is really a sane, rational approach, and I think we should go forward with this.
Is there any further discussion?
Call the question.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Asher.
I'm going to vote aye, but really hope that at some point this street will be bicycle-friendly for all ages and all levels, because I would not feel comfortable going down the street and cycling with my family, even with the speed bumps. But I will vote aye, hoping that this is an intermediary measure.
Councilmember Atkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
Mayor Martinez?
I, too, would like to see further improvements in the future, and that may be called for when we have the new measurements from our new system. And with that, I support this, aye.
Motion passes unanimously. You have a Nancy.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, we are moving on. Communications and reports. I don't see Charlie here or Norma Rue, so Catherine, who will you be giving our department report?
Actually--
Ah, actually.
--to report this evening. I'm stepping in for Charlie just for this one item. So the Planning Commission met on March 24, 2016, and we had quite a lengthy agenda. First, oh, sorry, Commissioner Kang had an excused absence from the meeting, so on all of these items, he did not vote. The first item up was 6701 Shellmount Street Residential Development, the Nady site. The commission first certified the final EIR for the project. The vote was 5-0 with Commissioner Kang absent and Commissioner Donaldson had recused herself for conflict of interest. The commission then approved the project with minor modifications to the conditions of approval. The vote was 5-0, again with Commissioner Kang absent and Commissioner Donaldson recused. Both the EIR certification and the project approval are appealable to the city council within 15 days, that is by Friday, April 8, 2016. So if the council wishes to call this project for review, this is the opportunity to do so. Moving on on the agenda was AT&amp;T Wireless Facilities Modifications, 6363 Christie Avenue, Pacific Park Place Plaza. The commission approved this project as presented. The vote was 5-0 with Commissioner Kang absent and Commissioner Keller recused. This approval is appealable to the city council within 15 days, that is by this Friday. So the council wishes to call this project for review, this is the opportunity to do so. Next was steady session for Stanford Health Center at 5800 Hollis Street. The commission held a steady session on proposed modifications to the building frontage and public right-of-way to accommodate valet parking as well as proposed signage for the building. Most of the commissioners were generally supportive of the proposal, although concerns were expressed about traffic circulation, signage, design, and other issues. The project will be coming back to the commission in the future for consideration of approval. The next steady session was short-term rentals. The commission held a steady session about the potential regulation for short-term rentals. Two Watergate residents spoke in support of a prohibition on short-term rentals. There was no clear consensus and a wide range of opinions expressed by the commissioners. A steady session before the city council is tentatively scheduled for your May 17 meeting, at which time the commission's recommendations will be reported in detail. Finally, the last item was the capital improvement program. The commission reviewed the draft capital improvement program for consistency with the general plan and voted 6-0 to find that the draft CIP is consistent with the general plan with Commissioner Kang absent. The commission also voted to recommend to the city council that $2 million be taken from other CIP projects to fund a gateway feature at Powell and Christie and to paint the water tower to promote civic identity. The vote on this motion was 4-0 with Commissioners Bowders and Cardoza abstaining and Commissioner Kang absent. And with that, I'm at the end of the planning director's report. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Nope, thank you. Thank you, Andrea.
That was a long meeting.
It was a long meeting.
Lot of study sessions. 9.2 council members?
Mayor Martinez, I have a request of staff. This is concerning Senate Bill 272. The city is required to have a catalog of data posted on our website by July 1, and I would hope you would bring back the information that we are on target to be doing that, to adhere to SB 272. If you could bring that back, a little mini-report on the next meeting, I'd appreciate it.
All right, I would like to alert my colleagues that I had previously said I was not going to bring forward the SOTA tax proposal, but I am, in light of new information, I am going to bring that forward at the next meeting for you to consider. Without going into it today, just new information has arisen that might make this a good year or two to bring this up, so we can discuss that at our next meeting on April 19.
Would you clarify something, Mayor?
Yes.
The SOTA tax would have to go before the voters?
Correct.
So is there time within this year to do that, to move it to the ballot?
Well-- For staffs?
I can provide a little bit clarification. So part of what will, what staff can provide for your next meeting as part of this discussion would be a calendar of working backwards from the election, from election date, about the steps that the city would have to take in order to put this item on the ballot for the November election.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we can discuss that next time when it's an agendized item, and we can have a nice, robust conversation about that. Council meetings, reporting on meetings attended? Community advisory body vacancies. Would the city clerk like to expand on these vacancies?
Council approved, with the roster of these committees, up to nine positions. And in doing so for these committees, there are vacancies on Parks and Recreation Commission Committee, and one of the vacancies is a school district vacancy, and one of them is a youth vacancy, and that has been posted. And it has also been forwarded to the school district. On the Economic Development Advisory Committee, there are two positions vacancies there, and that has also been posted. that has also been posted. Council can expect to see any submissions in May.
Great, thank you very much, Mayor.
Mayor Martinez, I'm sorry, I had one more comment to make. I just wanted to commend the Police Department for the absolutely professional and courteous way that they handled the situation in the chambers tonight. I think it was so well done, and it was a marvelous reflection on this city. So my thanks to the Police Department.
Yeah, I want to thank EPD also. As far as I know, it's the first time in the history of the city that business was disrupted and had to be adjourned until the disruption dissipated. And usually, we have a very courteous and respectful environment in council chambers, which is something that I'm very proud about. It was clear that that was not to be the case tonight, but I want to -- so I want to thank you for taking a fair amount of verbal abuse as well as general rowdiness until people decided that they'd had enough and wanted to go home. So my heartfelt appreciation for putting yourselves out there tonight.
And if I could just add one more thing, it was very clear to me that of all those people that came forward, I only saw a few Emeryville residents participating. That tells me a great deal.
All right, with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone.